Good evening everyone. Once again everyone, good evening. I'd like to call the Summer County Regular Meeting for Tuesday, February twenty-second to four. At the beginning, please give us an indication. Let us all stand and please remain standing with the flag of the meeting.
Let us pray. Our dear county members, Father, we do acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, move, and have our being. We understand that the earth is yours and the food is thereabouts. And we understand that we have a lot of decisions that we have to make. And we cannot rely on anything except for what you have provided us. And we thank you for that. And we ask you to help us to be good stewards of what you have blessed us with. And help us to make decisions that are according to your will. And as we approach the agenda that is before us this evening, we invite your presence and ask that you abide with us. And help us to always have love and consideration for others. Help us to always be kind to one another. And to think about the things that we, in the meditations of our hearts. These are all blessings we thank and ask in your precious name, in the name of Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. William Gayman served our country in the U.S. Army. He served for twelve years from nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-two. After his honorable discharge from service, he worked at National Health Care until he was medically retired. He is an active member and deacon at Jehovah Missionary Baptist Church. He is married to Cynthia Brunson Gayman, and they have two children, William Junior and Erica. He lives in County Council District Number Seven. Thank you for your service.
Mr. President, may I make a change to the agenda?
There are changes, sir.
Would you approve the agenda? Sir, to approve the movement for our Mr. President, second amendment. Mr. Baker, that we approve our meeting agenda for tonight and any discussions. Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed, the agenda is approved. We have a motion to approve our minutes for our regular meeting for Tuesday, February eighth. So we would like, and we'll be properly executed, that we approve our regular meeting with agenda, I mean our minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? We have a motion to approve our meeting agenda, uh, meeting minutes for our special meeting for February eighth. So we seconded, moved by Mr. Baker, seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, approving the special meeting council. Aye. Aye. All opposed, hearing none, special meeting minutes approved. Manus Mouse is approved.
Good evening. Uh, this evening we have RZ twenty-one twenty-six at forty-sixty-five Country Lane. The applicant is Mr. James Aaron Dyson. He is here to speak on behalf of the request and is the property owner. This request is to rezonate approximately five point eight acre tract of land from general residential to agricultural conservation. Uh, this is the property in question. It has frontage primarily on South St. Paul's Church Road, as well as some limited frontage on Country Lane. It is currently heavily wooded. Mr. Dyson acquired this property with intent to develop houses on it several years ago. Uh, but there are issues with septic tanks being able to be placed on this property because the soils are not good. Uh, right now it is zone general residential, which fundamentally means that the only practical use that can be done from a zoning standpoint with this designation is a residential development of some sort. In the absence of being able to construct septic tanks on this property, because it is not within the city limits, where sewer service would be available, it's fundamentally undevellable for residential purposes. That's where this request is coming out of. It's our understanding from a staff perspective that Mr. Dyson wishes to rezonate this property to agricultural conservation in order to allow some limited commercial development on the property, in particular at many storage warehouse sites. When we look at rezoning requests, we look at the comprehensive land use plan designation. Uh, this property is actually influenced by both suburban development as well as the military protection planning area. This is on the far western edge of the suburban development planning area within the county, uh, with military protection right across the street. Uh, generally when we have a property that's in this area where you've got two connecting designations, we look at the influences of both. Uh, this location is separated significantly from real urban development and suburban development in the community. And there are, I'm going to get the circumstances to support what would fundamentally be considered a downsizing from an intense residential designation because GR is the most intense single-family residential district available in the county, to the least intense development before you get into conservation, preservation. So it's asked to go to agricultural conservation. Uh, another thing that supports this request is actually in the point set range compatibility district, which is a noise overlay district, where the absence of residences is actually advantageous to the community because it's less likely to have noise complaints from pipe overhead. In the AC district, many warehouses are a conditional use. That means it's not a by right automatic use. It is subject to review and approval by planning staff. Uh, it also has additional development standards that are laid out in the ordinance. As you see on the screen, first and foremost, a many warehouse site cannot exceed four acres in size. So if this property were successfully rezoned, it would have to be subdivided so that only a four acre site can be developed. And that would have to meet our subdivision standards in terms of minimum lot size and lot frontage. Um, it is limited to fifty percent lot coverage, which means that no more than half of the lot, two acres, can be used for buildings. Um, the vehicular egress and ingress are limited to one point of each of the properties of running a street. In this case, the only street that could be used for commercial access is St. Paul's Church Road. The zoning ordinance specifically prohibits commercial access from residential streets, which is what Country Lane is. So if this property were to be rezoned and developed, it would have to have access only from St. Paul's Church Road. Um, it's for storage only, so you wouldn't be allowed to have any other business activities other than the storage rental units, which means somebody can't come in and rent a unit and run their business out of it. It would only be for personal storage purposes or professional storage purposes, but purely storage. With no outside storage as well, that means it wouldn't become a parking area for RVs or boats. That's a different use classification. And then we look at landscaping and screening, and it has to meet all of the ordinance requirements in Article Eight, Section B. Fundamentally, anywhere it busts, any use that's less intense, which is fundamentally all of the other property around it. It has to have a visual screen, a minimum of six feet in height, over three growing seasons. So you're talking about a vegetative buffer between them and all of the other properties. We have some additional criteria on top of that. Um, where we look at paved transition drives in the county, many warehouse facilities are not required to have paved parking if they do not have an onsite office. If they do have an onsite office, that paved parking only has to accommodate that particular office space. However, in the agricultural zoning district, we don't require paved parking except for handicapped spaces. We also require stormwater permitting, which requires that they, um, have a bona fide stormwater management plan so that any stormwater runoff from that site does not impact any of which is in property owners. Uh, just for perspective, this is what approximately four acres would look like. Uh, it's about a four hundred and twenty by four hundred and fifteen foot square. Uh, this lot on its north side is four hundred and fifteen feet long. And on its south side, it's about four hundred and thirteen feet. I did some quick and dirty measuring, but this is the approximate size and dimension of what four acres would look like. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request, not the use, just the rezoning request. Um, changing the designation from GR to the AC district is generally supported by the comprehensive plan in addition to the presence of the military protection overlay districts or the range compatibility district. Um, happy answering questions if I have, we would have Mr. Dyson to speak on behalf of the request.
Four acres, same as those four acres, you want to use two acres of that, focus. Focus, and you can leave the trees up all around.
It would go, it would go through a smart, the whole. The whole site can be four acres, that stormwater, that's transition drives, that's buffering, that's screening. But only half of the site can be used for building, like.
Half of the park could be used, that's why I gave that, half of it. You have law rules for buffering.
It, it would, it would have to go, this would be a major site plan. It would have to go through a site plan, would be processed with planning commission, where we look at the buffering and landscaping.
Mr. Chairman, go.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rudman, what council district is this in?
Uh, this is a district, this council district.
Thank you.
Mr. Rudman, can you go back one? He's on me. I wrote out and looked at the location myself.
Yes, sir.
I used the address on County, on Country Lane. Because that's what the sign posted. And I even told the administrator that I'm not in agreement with this because it's right in the middle of that residential street. But now, you're saying that they cannot, that extension, that little rectangular down at the bottom there is on Country Lane, cannot be used for an entrance.
Not for commercial development.
So that would not be an entrance site into that, if it was approved, that would not be an entrance site into, and I think you mentioned that the entrance would be off of St. Paul's Church.
The entrance would have to come off.
Not off of Country Lane.
It would have to come off of St. Paul's Church, right?
When I was on that site, it's heavily wooded, as shown by the two striped marks.
Correct, sir.
So it would not be visible at all from the residents that live along Country Lane.
Their development site would be limited to four acres, wherever that four acres is. So my recommendation and my staff's recommendation would be to place it as far away from any adjacent residential business as possible. And so this would be the ideal scenario that we would be supportive of from a staff standpoint.
Was there a, a sign posted on St. Paul's Church Road?
I believe there was supposed to be.
Yes, sir.
Yes, there was.
Yes, yes. Mr. Rudman, is the applicant an approval of us possibly just rezoning the four acres? Have you, as you're showing it to me?
We have had conversations with Mr. Dyson, but I let him speak to that. My understanding is that he was okay with it, that he is here this evening. So I believe it'd be best if he speak to that.
Well, he did a good question. He could answer, yes.
Okay, just, just support him and let him answer. Okay, well, do you want, how do you want to do a public hearing? We're going to have that here on the podium here, that's prior to, uh, prior to us taking a hold on that there will be a public hearing.
Alright, sir.
So, we'll wait until the public's done. Any other questions on this one?
I thought the public hearing was just answered, because I might have.
Yeah.
Okay, I might have a lot of weight on what residents. If these women's doing those four acres, it takes us all this out here to stay in front of the wood. That might mean some tons, I don't know, he's here for this, but that may be some councilmen as well. So if you're willing to do those four acres, say, yes, you're shaking heads, so that's the case.
Yes, that's fine. Okay. And the only reason I haven't cut off that other lot there, I was going to build a house there, but it's not suitable for septic tanks. We even got DTEC out there the other day. Yes, we even got DTEC out there the other day. It was turned down years ago, that little gem out there. So the only reason I haven't cut that off is basically tax purposes.
Yeah.
So, um, I can, but there would not be any usage on Country Lane. And that sign that was posted on Country Lane, it was, there is one on St. Paul also, so.
So you're okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that, that is fine.
So that on, on the four acres that's shown there?
Yes, sir.
And not rezoning the rest?
That, that'll be fine, yes, sir. And if I need to get that survey off or whatever I need to do with that, I can do that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Another pair of the public hearing open. Anyone wanting to speak for or against, uh, Mrs. Orning request? Please come to a podium and state your name for a record. Any other ones?
I think, I'm Brett Polkay, I live at four thirty Country Lane. And this, this, I have a petition too, that everybody that touches this or can see this is signing this, and they don't want it. I mean, we don't want to, you know, we all, we're in there for general residential. I mean, that's what we bought in for. It's a quiet neighborhood, and if they put storage buildings in there, that's kind of, it's just kind of, kind of uglified. And, um, you know, we've got a lot more traffic with people coming in. Um, it's, it's just not going to be a general, you know, who would want that in their neighborhood? You know, have a storage building in there or a, or a big warehouse. I mean, we, we want it, it's just quiet, and it's a dead end road, and we'd just like it to keep it that way. And, uh, you know, sometimes that brings crime in too, you know. Why are you putting crime coming in? People breaking into them things, you know, because it's, it's kind of in a, you know, secluded area. You know, uh, we know what piece of kind of opportunities. So, uh, that's, we just, we just want to keep it general residential and not, because agricultural conservatives, or whatever, I can't say that last word, but, uh, it just opens it up to so much more. I mean, if a warehouse doesn't go in, I mean, you could put actually chicken houses or something else in there, you know. Yeah, we, we don't want that. I mean, we want to leave it to the residential area, build a house, that's fine. But years ago, that never perked, the whole thing never perked because Mr. Baughman owned it years ago. Four times it was like sold, and then the money had to get given back because it didn't perk. And including that, well, we just heard the front one didn't perk. And most of all, it didn't, so that's just my, uh.
So what were you naming again?
Uh, Brett Polkay.
He's good, I believe.
Yeah. B-R-A-N-T?
I mean, I, I get it.
P-O-K-A-Y.
P-O, just like it's.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Polkay. Alright, thank you all.
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask a question? Yes. How many, how many names are on your petition?
Uh, I don't have, I don't have it on the numbers, you know, I, I, this is kind of new.
Gotcha.
I would say like twenty, twenty-five, maybe.
And have you met with the developer yet?
No, I, I talked to the dad the other day when they were out doing the park test on that, that front lot that, um, edges up to Country Lane. And kind of discussed a little bit, you know, we're, we're not wanting to kill the guy's, you know, thing to make money, you know. I mean, we want a residential, I mean, we love it back there. I've been back there twenty-eight years, and these folks have been back there longer, I mean.
How was the first one on the street?
Yeah, it's just a nice quiet place, you know.
Do you agree with that from the Ravens Nest?
Uh, sometimes, yeah.
Yeah, that mall is kind of close there too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Over wire in the mall now.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that, those people won't, the, the bosses won't speak over there, but, but, you know, it's, I'm.
Must be the play in my head.
Um, you know, it's, it's, it's dealt, you know, it's, it's.
Go back and see Washington, is there any way you can work with the developer? I mean, if you can buffer this, you never sit anywhere. I mean, I don't understand why you'd be against it, people have trees going around. So I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not my, not my.
We just want to keep it residential, you know, it's where we live, you know, we don't want a business there, you know, if we want business. We can go downtown or go up to four forty-one by the base, you know. I mean, it's, it's just, it's a big family, as you can tell, because they're all here, you know. So it's, it's just what we do, you know, we band together, you know, we want to keep it nice, you know. Everybody.
Mr. Polkay, that, that list you have, like I said, I went to the site and I rode down to the end of the street where it becomes private.
Yes, sir.
So I didn't go up in there. There are more signatures on that list than there are houses on the country.
Yes, sir. They, you got the two trailers across the street, they signed, you know, Bob Lee, uh, he signed, he's over, he'd have to look at that because, you know, even though there's like a horseback during the week, and then Ernie signed, he's in the back corner. Anybody that can kind of see it or has to go by it, you know, in that area. Uh, he might even go, anybody that was basically adjacent to it, that's who I could just sign.
Did you get any signatures of, of anyone from St. Paul's Church Road?
Well, that, the two trailers across, I can't think of their name, but they're kind of related to the Corsees.
Corsees.
Yeah. Um, it's, do you need a copy of this, or can I get a, can I get a copy of it too? Because I don't want to give you the whole thing.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name.
Terry Wells.
Kenz Wells.
Right there on the back side. All of this is me. So you're buttoning me on a couple of sides there? Yeah, you're talking about putting a buffer up. Trees don't hold the trash. That's a twenty-four seven business for people to come in and out. The lady that lives just to the right is an elderly lady. And her husband's in the nursing home, and she's sickly. That's going to be right up her backyard, it's up my backyard. The crime rate, the traffic. And I've seen the buffer like at Dollar General, who's going to maintain it? It looks horrible. And this is a residential area, I was the first one to build besides the elderly lady out there.
Okay, as well. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, something no one's really mentioned is, did you see that red trailer?
Excuse me, that, what's your name?
Ernie Saru. If you see that red trailer to the left, that whole lane, like all the way back to see a barn and that whole yellow line is my route. All that belongs to me.
At the end of that, in the Country Lane?
No, you, this is muddy water. So the red trailer is not mine, but everything else in that, those two big blocks is all mine. So right now my route floods, like you get a hard rain, it holds water. The whole left side of that proposed area is super loaded, um, it, it holds water all the time. The little house right here, I think it's this one? It's flooded like four times or more. Um, so by building that area up, they already said it won't perk. So you're going to have to fill in a huge amount of dirt to be able to build on it because it will flood. We had that flood five, eight years, wherever it was.
Two thousand and fifty.
There's a foot and a half water of my, my property, like, see my front door? It's way the hell higher than that. So that's just a dumb idea of killing it, because you're going to flood out the other houses. You're not going to flood me out, but the other houses on my roof will be affected. It's going to flood my driveway out. Because the, the drain system goes through that, that whole edge, and it's, I'd say it's way lower.
And what would you ask?
It's S-E-R-U-Y-A. So pretty much Terry has all the corners on one side, and I have all the other, other, so pretty much we're both against it. So I don't see how that would justify.
Alright, so thank you.
Alright, thank you all for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Chairman, has the planning commission explored the flooding issues that the gentleman spoke of? Are we aware?
This property is not an antimass special flood hazard area, so it's not actually an area that we have regulatory oversight of. Uh, it is highly likely that it is localized flooding that is of size and scale that has not been picked up on FEMA mapping. Um, so I know from twenty fifteen, because I was in a great many ruined houses, there were areas in this part of the community that are not in a special flood hazard area that would experience localized flooding, either because soil conditions were such that it couldn't drain, um, or just because the drainage systems were backed up other places. Um, the fact that, that the property doesn't perk does contribute to the understanding that it's going to hold water because if it doesn't perk, that means the water's not infiltrating down into the water.
That means it's going to run off.
It will run off somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, is this something we need to explore a little bit more, you think? Think that would be wise?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment anyway. So our AC uses and most of the uses, maybe about two-thirds of the uses in AC are conditional use, as this is also. But most of them fall under the category of either three or five hundred feet, of which the applicant has to get approval of two-thirds of the people within that three hundred or five hundred feet.
There, there are some C-three-hundred and C-five-hundred uses, but a vast majority of the commercial uses in AC are straight conditional uses.
Anyway, I mean, I was just going to say that if that were the case in this case, that, that it would pass. You would get two-thirds approval of the applicants around this one, I don't think. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with staff and all about maybe rezoning just four acres of it. But, uh, definitely not any more than that, that's for sure. But yes, there would like to defer and, and we can steer.
Yes, sir. I'd like to speak to the flooding issue. The last few times we've had flooding, uh, Mrs. Rumbert there, which is, she's the old lady, she's in the hospital right now. Um, or she's in the home, uh, he's a veteran. Um, when, when we flood, they always flood. And a lot of that's to do, and, you know, I've had to jump on the, the people that do the roads and grounds or wherever you call it, you know, I've had to call them many a times because there'll be a tree falling on one of the empty lots down there, and then that backs us all up. But during the big flood, we had six inches, I walked down the road to that ditch there towards the Ravens Nest, and there was six inches of water down there. We had a problem with it. I, I had water in my garage twice. So, you know, if, if it, God forbid it happens, if it does happen, I mean, that's going to have to be addressed to take that water out to St. Paul's. I mean, that's just, because we can't handle any more water. We get flooded and it gets worse every year, you know. And mainly because them ditches all along the side of the Ravens Nest, all the way up to Dr. Durant's property, is, them, them things haven't been cleaned out in years. So they back up, and then that's, like I said, at the end of our road, that, that thing was six inches of water while walking down there, you know. So, and you know, it's, it's crying shame that that lady has, you know, had to get on the city's, or the, the county's people to get down there so she could go out and get groceries. And thank God we got two, you know, me and, and, uh, the neighbor there that go over and help her out and do stuff for her, you know, because that's just criminal, and she's a prisoner in her own home. So water is a big issue for that, I mean, big time. Because, you know, our ditch is still up quick, and, you know, we're trying to get them out there and clean them out, it's like four feet.
Thank you, Professor. Thank you all. Alright, yes, sir.
Um, to speak about, uh, what was mentioned earlier about being a twenty-four hour business and crime and all of that. Um, uh, County Council regular, uh, the city of Sumter requires a six-foot fence all the way around the, the property. Um, uh, county council reg, uh, the city of Sumter requires a six-foot fence all the way around the, the property, um, of the, where the storage units are going to be located. And there's going to be a timed gate on the property that every person that would rent a unit would have an individual code. That, that gate's going to be cut off about probably nine, ten o'clock at night, so it's not going to be twenty-four-hour a day thing. Um, that's how many of the other storage companies in town do with that. And there will be a, a dump, one of the city of Sumter, uh, waste management dump containers out there on site that will be empty every week. So when somebody decides they want to clean out their unit, they can put their garbage in that. They don't just throw it out in the yard or whatever. So, uh, that is to make, make note of that, um, comment that was made earlier.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing that I play up public hearing closed, what's the pleasure, council?
I would that we defer from now, so we can have a little more discussion on this among ourselves. I'll say that. And, and take a chance to maybe get stormwater, yeah, our county stormwater involved in all this.
We have a motion in the second to defer, second reading, any discussion? Is it all in favor? All opposed?
Would you like this back after you stand as well next?
Stormwater, I give it a time for stormwater? Okay, next item on the agenda is orders number twenty-two-nine-seventy-one, and it's the ordinance establishing the new electoral districts of the, uh, the county council. This is the second reading, the public hearing will be on third reading. Now, it's just third reading. It's ready for the third reading. Those maps before and after are both the same, like that reading. They look like they're basically the same.
They're, they're not the same. One of them is dated February seventh, and the one that we are taking action on was dated February fifteenth.
So why do we have a problem up there?
Well, just because when we had our last meeting, we took a look at the, the proposed lines and, um, the, the districts that were affected. Um, um, those representatives, which included, uh, myself and Councilman Baker and Councilman Washington and, um, maybe Councilman Eaton, I'm not sure. Um, but we all, um, that, we met with, uh, Mr. Haskins, and, um, there were some slight changes, um, to, uh, the one that Mrs. Blanding is standing for. Uh, there were some slight changes, no, uh, there were some slight changes to the other one over there. If you notice, that first one, um, Councilman Baton's district looked so, so, so much like it was Jeremander. Um, the shape of it doesn't look right. And so, and we went back to the drawing board. Um, you can see the improvement in the shape of her, of his map. Uh, plus, the, uh, there was an area that, um, jettled out into District Five that has been alleviated. And so therefore, that's the revised map that we, that we're going to be considering tonight. And yes, and Councilman Baton was involved in taking a look at it too, because those numbers had to, um, had to reflect population.
Mr. Chairman, this is the version that was approved a second reading a couple of weeks ago, and this is what's been modified to the third reading. Slight, slight adjustments in District One, District Two, District Five, and a small adjustment, I think, to the, to the desk.
All right, good. This is third reading and final reading for the redistricting. And I'll now declare, the public hearing is open. Anyone wishes to speak to council about this proposed redistricting? Please proceed to the podium and say your names for the red. Sorry about that. Here in the public hearing, both, pleasure, council. Lou from Brooklyn.
I have a comment, uh, as a question, Mr. Chairman. Is, uh, Morris County still at District Seven?
I can answer that, yes. It's still, yes, because it used to be in District Five. And, um, during the Vasrey enforcement, it was placed in District Seven, and that has not changed.
That's still.
The, the actual line actually, um, placed more of that area into District Seven.
Okay. All right, that's all I got to say. That's the question I have. Okay, any further discussion? It's been moved to the second. Yeah, we approve this map. You have no other discussion, all in favor? All right. All opposed? On the old building's orders number twenty-two-nine-seventy-one. So that's, that's. Come down to committee for what, reports?
That's right. And, uh, Colonel Fairbaird met Saturday and all members present. And we took the following actions, beginning with the Convergence Tax Advisory Committee. There are four names that we wanted to send to the city for ratification. And I mentioned the names now, too, that takes place. That was a motion, second, to approve those four names.
Have a motion as a second to forward those four names to the city, all in favor? All right. All opposed? Also, concerning the Capitol Project Sales Tax Commission members, all three were appointed. Randy McCall, Bob Smith, and Peggy Blanding. As a motion and second coming from the committee. Have a motion in the second, any discussion? Anyone in all in favor? All right. Concerning the Culture Commission, there's a motion, second, to approve Walter Chup Wilson to serve in that commission. Have a motion in the second, all in favor of Mr. Wilson being appointed to the Culture Commission? Can you say aye? All right. All opposed? Also, a motion and second to appoint Tasha Gardner to the litter advisory board to replace this Barbara Richburg that you resigned. Have a motion in the second to appoint Tasha, Ms. Tasha Gardner, all in favor? All right. All opposed? Please my folks. Thank you. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public Safety Committee met this afternoon with the Southern County Sheriff's Department. The purpose of the meeting was to develop some immediate safety precautions for Pike Road. As all of us may recall, there was an incident recently where a nine-year-old was killed crossing over Pike Road. Um, there are some long-term conversations in place to address the issue in a permanent way. Uh, our committee met today with the Sheriff's Department to create some short-term measures that would ensure safety of children, adults, citizens who may attempt to cross over at that very dangerous point. Sheriff's Department will be back in a couple of weeks to share, uh, what those objectives will be and how they will be implemented. Uh, they'll also be meeting with the City of Sumter Police Department to work in conjunction with them, um, to make sure that every safety precaution is in place. Uh, the second matter that we discussed was the Sheriff's Department's readiness to support our litter campaign, and our understanding is that they are on the go. So hopefully, we'll be seeing some progress in that area as well. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Our special meeting. How do you counsel?
Mr. Chair, yes, sir. Um, special meeting was held this afternoon at five o'clock. There were a couple items on the agenda. The first, financial report was given by Ms. Det Rogers, our finance director. This is the monthly report for the county council, or excuse me, county's financial. Uh, the second item we discussed earlier was information regarding the redistricting for our council districts. And, uh, the third item was done in executive session, information was shared, but no action was taken. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Um, have any reports from council members on other meetings, trainings, and our conferences?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, I wondered if the county administrator was going to give the coroner's report to the deputy general? Or you just, Mr. Chair, I was informed last week that the coroner was not able to provide any additional information.
Okay.
I would like to, uh, do an updated report on the veterans' death in Sumter County. Uh, since I reported on January the eleventh, we have had twenty-three more veterans to die, giving us a total of two hundred and forty-one veterans that have passed away in the last four hundred and forty-two days. I've been keeping this report since December eighth, twenty-twenty. The source of my information is the Sumter IED obituaries. So every forty-four hours, a veteran dies in Sumter County. The average age of the veterans are seventy-four. Age range is twenty-seven to a hundred. The race, Caucasians, one hundred and sixty-nine, African-Americans, seventy-one. Of course, the most, two hundred and eighty-three, two hundred and thirty-eight are male, fourteen-four female. Uh, Air Force, one hundred and five veterans, Army, seventy-nine, Navy, seventeen, Marines, eight, National Guard, twelve, and unknown. And the only reason I know that they were veterans is because they were being buried in the Fort Jackson or Arlington National Cemetery. So that's my report, and I just want to share that because again, we have a very large population of veterans in Sumter County. And, uh, I just want to recognize those that have passed away and given their lives to this country. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baton. Mr. Washington. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be heard. Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, I've been having several meetings in my community about the Capitol penny tax allotment. So my folks are interested in this, in this issue. And believe it or not, Mr. Chairman, I hear a lot from residents and other issues. So as I began to peel back the last two penny tax allotments, I discovered some interesting information. The first penny tax in two thousand eight, which ran to two thousand and fifteen. Believe it or not, Mr. Chairman, it had zero dollars in it for road paving. Not a penny. Not one penny. The second penny tax, it started in twenty sixteen, which will run to twenty twenty-three, had eight-point-nine million dollars for paving roads. It had three-point-one million for resurfacing. The total allocation for both penny taxes, the first two that we've already gone through, we totaled a hundred and fifty-four million dollars in revenue, first two. So if you do the math, eight-point-nine for paving roads between those two penny tax allocations, that is only five percent of a hundred and fifty-four million dollars. The resurfacing, which is three-point-one million, a mere two percent of the hundred and fifty-four million dollars this county brought in. Only thirteen million of the one fifty-four. And what's interesting about that is that in twenty fourteen, there were newspaper articles that the councilman from Earl Beach Highway, he's quoted as saying, "We want to make sure every citizen can see a benefit in this tax." The article went on to say that this issue, roads, is the most highly requested project from citizens. But yet, it was only funded at five percent. Wasn't even funded in the first penny. We were warned by our county administrator, and this again is twenty fourteen, that it's important to our citizens, and it is the number-one thing that our council hears on a routine basis is our road system. This was in twenty fourteen. Again, we're at only five percent funding for road paving. Now, we fast forward to twenty twenty-one. Another quote. Our county administrator has warned us again. The need is so great. Roads were a priority, and I expect it will be a priority again because the need is so great. Comments from citizens. Adrian Kaz next, if I pronounced that correctly. If we can get an accounting of every penny spent, year after year, an explanation of why the roads are horrific. From a citizen. And exactly what they plan to spend the tax on, I might consider supporting it. John McCoy. Fix our roads with the tax money and road user fees you have already collected before you try to tackle more projects that take more money out of our budget. Wheels, tires, line ramps also add to the taxes that Sumter residents already have to pay. And this gentleman says, "We don't need any new projects." He wants basic services. Now, in the first penny, we funded some things that might not be considered basic services. We funded Patriot Park to the tune of two million dollars. Two million dollars. Then we funded the Patriot Park Athletic Complex and Activity Center, while most of our other community centers are in shambles. The budget for that was six million dollars, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Six million dollars. Paid a lot of roads with six million dollars. And while we were doing that, we only allocated two-point-five million to renovate Cherrydale, Concord, Ebeneze, the Spectrum, Rembert, and Mayfield. But six million for Patriots Park. And our roads are falling apart. It's, it's estimated that every citizen pays upwards of seven hundred dollars a year because of the horrible condition that our roads are in. I'm making these comments because I want to make sure that everyone sitting on this council and the folks at the city understand that roads were left out of the first penny. They were short-changed on the second penny. And residents are looking to be. And residents are looking to be taken care of on the third penny. I just wanted to update the council on that information as you process how you're going to vote on this issue and what projects will be selected. But just know that rural folks are not happy. Mr. Chairman, thank you for my time.
Mr. Washington, I'd like to be here. First of all, you did not state how much money to be in set aside this year, executive session. I can. I would love to, because I would love to talk about that, too. And if you are giving me permission to talk about it, I am happy to talk about it. You're correct. But this is ridiculous. Basic services is what government is supposed to provide to its citizens, and we are not doing our job. And if folks don't have good roads to ride in, town, why should they come to town and shop? They should be treated like every other citizen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments from council? Want the report, Mr. President?
Yes, sir. In your package, there's information about the South Carolina Association of Counties Conference, which is coming up. Anyway, we have technical difficulties over here. But we also have the Public Works Committee meeting, a monthly reporting or packet, an additional to the Public Works. I'll just scan on down because it keeps jumping back and forth. The Planning Department will be having its meeting, and you should be able to receive all of this information in your Dropbox. And there are a few persons that have talked about going to the South Carolina Rules Summit. I just need to know immediately. The Development Board is going to try to work that out for council at all possible. And that's it.
Mr. Mason, you have a report, sir? Coming out to the public comments section of our agenda. Anyone wishing to address council, please proceed to the audience. State your name for the record.
Good evening, Councilor, Mr. Kane. I'm back again. My name is James Marw Johnson. And I'm one of the residents that my councilman, Mr. Washington, was talking about. And I'm glad to see him here, to get more rural people here this time, because it seems like no one heard me. And besides, I'm a senior citizen, and I'm a veteran. And I'd just like to say, all this patching up that you're doing, my aunt and uncle and their road need to be fixed up, too. Now, I asked y'all about Duffy Road. In this Washington talk, someone came out here. I said, "I wish they would have knocked on my door. I might have been at work, my wife was there. You could have opened the gate, knocked on the door, let her know who you were and why you was here." She could have told you, because, you know, if there's trees that you need to be cut down, get your equipment down here, cut the trees. We really don't care. But I'm still like, though, how you go and go by and just pave the road. But now, you're talking about all of these fronts with the penny tax. I pay the penny tax. These citizens back here pay the penny tax. And we like to see what's going on with the penny taxing right now. As you heard from our representative, ain't nothing. But you can pay Patriot Parkway. You can pay down here about Wilson High School. But you don't want to do nothing with paying Savannah Road. You want to patch it up, patch it up, patch it up. Well, patch it up ain't getting. When it gets bad, potholes are still there. Now, we got, I understand, we got all these fronts coming, and we pay taxes like everybody else. If we don't pay our property tax, you're going to come and take our home. If we don't pay the car taxes, you want to take our car from me. I say, now, we pay taxes just like anybody else. Now, I don't know what the situation is, like I told you. I was born here, raised up in the north, come back home. My mother, when she came down here, had the same issue. I mentioned this to y'all before. But I'm back again to tell you, one of them, I'm going to see some resources. One of these people back here that was blacking for our representative, Mr. Washington, go see some resources. Because eventually, we not in the right neighborhood. And I don't understand that. I'm going to go tell my dad. Because I was going to use up my three minutes today. And I just come and talk to you about this. This is ridiculous. But I thank y'all for hearing me. I think my people from back here from the other rural area, I'm quite sure they probably going to come up and talk to you, too. Because we need something done. And ain't nothing happening, ain't nothing getting done in our neighborhood. And we paying taxes just like everybody else. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Elaine Brunson, CEO and President of Sumter Black Chamber of Commerce. My concern today is in reference to the Pike Road safety area, or the safety concerns, excuse me. I do appreciate learning that Mr. Washington is taking the initiative to open discussion for change. In other areas, I've noticed that crosswalks with a light system that is only activated if a pedestrian is crossing a bypass. I've noticed that in other areas, so I thought I would suggest that to you all. This would not interrupt traffic, rather save lives. Citizens access food and other resources that are on the other side of Pike Road. Why should we continue to watch our children and our citizens die? How many accidents will it take for us to bring about change? That's all I have to say.
Good evening. My name is Jose McCoo.
What was your last name?
McCoo, M-A-C-C-O. I live off of Coconut Plantation Road, which I was told it was private, so I did some digging and found out it's not private. It's county road. A few years ago, I sent some pictures, I think it's to Ms. Lenny, where after the rain, we have kids that has to walk to the street to catch the bus with plastic bags on their feet so they won't get mud. Is it to protect the bus? Because the bus don't go down that road. So I went to DPW, tried to get, I've got signatures, tried to get them to come and pave that road. You know what was told to me? Well, we don't pave roads to improve the property, the value of your property. If I was worried about the value of my property, I would not have built my house on that road. But I am concerned about the kids and people's property that goes up and down that road. The farmers that are on that road, they don't care about the speed. They just roll down there like they own the road, and it's a county road. We have to, the neighbor have to put a sign up there, "Drive like your kids live here." Why? The roads are terrible. If the school bus came and I come down there to pick those kids up, you putting them kids in danger. And it does not make any sense. Just like the gentleman said, we all pay taxes. The gentleman up there just gave you the numbers. You're not spending it where it's supposed to be spent. Granted, I chose to live down here. My wife was born and raised down here. I served twenty-plus years in the military and showed the shield. There's talks about, oh, making it better for veterans to live here. He don't want to be down here. They have nothing to come down here for. You're not taking care of them. You're not taking care of the roads. But yet, you want them to come down here. Got to get it right. We shouldn't even have to come down here and be heard for something that we already paying for. I understand Patriot Parkway is close to Shaw. You building all them houses down there with people with probably more money. So you paying no more attention. Wilson Road, I think since I've been here, 2009, I think it's been paved two or three times. And that's just since 2009. I spent fourteen straight years in the Middle East. Everybody wanted me to come back home. Hell, I'd rather be down there. Fourteen years, in and out of a battlefield, supporting the troops and the mission down there. Hell, we paid airfields all the time. For people that live here. No, you're giving me time, right? And I like to be heard, and that's the problem. You don't want to hear from people that got something to say.
All I'm saying is, just wrap it up, please, that's all.
All right, but just, okay, so I'm asking you to wrap up the money and spend it on those roads that we live on. Can you do that? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is James Clay. I'm from a rural area there, and I've been there last week. Now, just like the gentleman said earlier, we should have to come down here every time they have a meeting and try to get something done with our roads out of the economy. Now, we all have, you all have nice cars. Pay a lot of money for your cars these days, it's ridiculous. You know what I mean? But we need cars and trucks to get back and forward to work, or whatever we have to do. When you paying fifty thousand dollars for a vehicle to go into a road that is money-slicky, and you've got all this money tied up in your car? You pay all these taxes. I'm a veteran. We all pay all these taxes, and we see nothing done in economy. Nothing. We have, we have Dennis Mill Road. Dennis Mill Road has not been paved since I don't know when. Only thing they do is pass their pothole. How long the potholes last? Until a hard rain comes, then they all fall apart. Okay, listen. We not here to start no racket. We only here to be here, right, because we pay these taxes. We own vehicles. We own homes that we have to get to. We have, on Pine Side Drive, we have elderly people. You know, you have people that is on, is sick and helpless, and they can't get anything out. We need better, we need Pine Side Drive, that need to be paved. Development is growing, it need to be paved. Dennis Mill Road is a mess. You coming into this curve by getting sanders down. Coming in this curve, you hit a pothole, you make the car. When you hit a pothole, your vehicle going to bounce around. You causing, that's an accident waiting to happen. We had a couple accidents on that, on that street. We take our money and just do whatever else that they want to do with it. That's not right. That's not right. You're not paying attention to us. You're not listening to us. We pay these taxes. These weren't that penny tax. We not going to support it if you don't put a good chunk of that money set aside to pave our roads. We had Dennis Road paved. Listen, Dennis Road was paved. Now, if you want to do a job, you want to do it the best as you can. If a job is a job, it was doing right. You go down Dennis Road, and the line that they put in there is ridiculous. It don't make sense. We spending all this money, and you're just going to take some and throw it away. I'm going to check, I'm going to get it towed in a little bit. But listen to me. Sir, committee, listen. We want to be heard. We not coming here just to sit down and just to look at and look. We don't want that. We want y'all to do something. You making us want to back off doing, paying the tax. But like the gentleman said earlier, if we don't pay, what's going to happen? You going to come take our car? You going to take our house, our land? It's not fair. We want to be heard. If you not going, if y'all not going, think that's paying the tax and do so with the country, hey, we not going to, we not going to go for it. It's a big chunk you need to put out for us. We not going to go for it. Thank you for my time, you know, and I appreciate you. God don't want us to give any kind of way. We all supposed to pull together. And we not pulling together in the country. Thank you.
I received my tax bill on a twelve-year-old car. And I was surprised that the one-third of the tax was for road user fee. And I'm asking, part of those road user fees for that I've collected every year is not to maintain the road. I was hypnotized when I was working in Lake, when I would see the road plows parked three, four weeks at a time. So there's money that's being collected every year for roads, road user fee. And we have in the sales tax, so why our roads still that way? I live on a paved road, North Kings Highway, down by the Dollar Junction. And every time a construction vehicle's passed, sometimes my alarm goes off because of the holes and the bumps in the road. And that's a major road, and it should not be. As I said, we are taxpayers, too, just because we choose to live in a county. We choose there because we want to be there. But we want service for our money. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mamie Smith, and I live out in the rural area also. And I have three grandkids that whenever it rains on our dirt road, the bus doesn't come to pick them up because the road is so messed up. And it's not all the time, but when we have a large amount of rainfall, the roads are like railroad tracks, you know? And it runs out into the farmer's field. So if we try to, like, go out to the field or whatever, then we are likely to fall down trying to get out, in and out our road. So anyway, I'm just asking y'all to please help us and pay some of our dirt roads so that we can have more convenience for our children and everybody else concerned. Thank you.
How's everyone doing? My name is Michael Miller, and I live in the Horace community, also on Sumter Land and River. And Sumter Land and Road was paved in the mid-seventies, nineteen-seventies. I remember that because earlier, at the beginning of seventy, I had to walk that dirt road sometime to meet the bus. So that's the last time anything where a road was paved. Like the gentleman said, and so many others have said, we putting bandages on their road, but like, every time it rains, we have the same problem, the property next week. And my thing is that if I give you money for a pine, I don't want the scraps that falls on the floor. I want a piece of that pine because I have some money in there, too. And as I ride through... And as I ride through, call it Sumter area, I see a lot of sidewalks being done now, in areas that sidewalk was never there before, but a lot of sidewalks being done. Um, I rode through, uh, right behind Alice Drive and USC, and I see a tennis court. I, I mean, look, you're just tennis, tennis court, that, that's there. Now, you asking for another penny tax. Matter of fact, the only thing I saw in my area for a penny tax, when they, uh, renovate the fire station. That was it. That was it. We were like the same thing. I mean, give me a piece of my pie, since I'm giving you, uh, uh, my penny. And if, and if that's not gonna happen, then I think that, that the thing that we need to do as citizens in the rural area, and we know how information, we can get information out of, we get out, in our churches. Then that's what we gonna have to do. We have to get out to our churches and let them know that, explain to the people that if we can't get our justice voted, then we're not voting for a penny tax. When we have voted for penny tax on, what, two, two, on two occasions, and really hasn't seen anything. You know, I, I, we like to walk, um, uh, we have seniors that like, would like to have a area that they could walk around instead of going to highway, where someone might hit them. We're not getting any of that. And I glad, um, uh, Representative Washington brought up our Patriot Parkway. Come on, all we're asking for is a piece of the pie, not the scraps that falls on the floor. You know, that the dog. Come on, it, it, it's time to stop. And I do my lot of, I do a lot of shopping, I don't even, I, I, I try not to come to Sumter sometimes. I do a lot of shopping in Camden. I'm much rather go to Camden than actually come to Sumter sometimes. To be honest with you. Cause I see the work that Camden is doing. I see the work that Kershaw Camden is doing. It's ridiculous. I done been, I, I, I spoke to Wendy Brody, I spoke to Congressman, uh, Washington about the, uh, the condition of, of, not only the condition of the road, but ditch, ditch line. We don't have a ditch line in the road, cause it's trees. Not bushes, trees growing in the ditch. We, and, and when I call, uh, uh, DOT, oh, um, we don't have enough employees, uh, uh, better than that. I'll try this a boat. Can't, I mean, if you don't want a person to try to lease track. I worked at the prison for twenty-seven years. They leased all their tractors, when they vanished with them, uh, when they broke down, they swam, turned them back in. Thank you, that's all I'm saying, just give me a piece of my pie that I paid for.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Brenda Williams is my name, Family Incorporated, five oh one two, nonprofit charitable organization. Uh, our organization will be applying for more funds from the county and from the city in reference to the American Rescue Plan Act. And I wanted to find out, is there a procedure for application for more funds? We have, um, by God's grace, done a lot of work stretching dollars. We know how to stretch dollars to make them productive. We put, uh, roofs on some mobile homes, uh, fix some floors that had paved in. I, I got water running when people didn't have running water for six to eight months. Uh, some families did not have hot water. A luxury hot water to take a shower, hadn't had it for six to eight years. They didn't know they had a water heater behind a wall in a closet. And so, those kind of things, simple pleasures. And so, we are appreciative of the fact that, uh, monies are being set aside for low-income to moderate-income families of Sumter County and the city of Sumter. First thing. So I wanna know is our process, because we sure will be applying for more funds. Secondly, again, I mentioned the Manning Avenue Bridge. That bridge is eighty-one years old. Studies show that once fifty years go by, the bridge, the bridges in America need to be replaced. Well, Manning Avenue Bridge is eighty-one years old. Back in two thousand thirteen, it was mentioned, I just Googled it. Penny sales tax. The Manning Avenue Bridge replacement was mentioned nine years ago. And it has been placed almost on the bottom of the to-do, to-do list. The Sharp Pouch Greenway will be opened up this spring. People will be able to walk and connect with nature, and so forth, and that's good. I'll be out there on the Sharp Pouch Greenway myself, exercising. However, four million dollars was spent on that luxury, and two point five million dollars have been estimated to be set aside for a bridge that's falling apart. There was just a bridge in Pittsburgh that collapsed out of nowhere. And by God's grace, nobody was killed. So, we are asking for the Manning Avenue Bridge, thank you very much, to be moved up on the list. Let's get things moving on that bridge. Finally announce that. The Sumter County Council has members sitting on this council right now who have prominent positions on the Sumter urban area transportation study that makes decisions about roads and bridges. Big dis, uh, decisions. Please, uh, advocate for the improvement of these roads and the replacement of that bridge. Put it on the agenda like pronto. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Counselor, Robert Robinson. Uh, you've heard a lot talked about roads this morning, this afternoon. I've been fully supportive of the, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand sixteen penny sale tax. And, uh, we have, we have been promised something to be done, has not been done there. Now, I wanna be on board. I wanted to be able to support you with your begs a penny sale tax, but if we not gonna get anything proposed and so forth, and sidewalks, uh, people in my area is not gonna support it. Now, if you talking about raising a hundred and fifty-four million dollars, uh, yeah, then if, you should be admitting at least seventy-five dollars, seventy-five, half of that to roads. And I think if you do that, with roads, with all these road errors, where roads need to be repaired, re, or paved, sidewalks, cause of, you put, I don't know what the criteria to doing sidewalks, but sidewalk come down my road, a piece of them, and you get almost to my house, it's stopped. So we have to get in our car, drive, if we wanna walk sidewalk. So, I wanna be on board, and I wanna support the penny sale tax, but you gotta tell me what, how much of that hundred and fifty-four millions that's gonna get, is you gonna put to water roads? Then I'll be on board, if not, I'll be in opposition.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna do one thing. I wanna acknowledge Degan Washington. I'm sorry to Degan Washington it, but I commend you on what you doing. I'm sorry, but I didn't acknowledge you at first. We need someone, and we thank you for Degan Washington, for what, working for us.
Thank you for having me. Anyone else? And now declare a public comment section closed. For the gentleman.
Second. Before we make an announcement, second on the floor. Please do a gentleman.
Just allow him a fourth of a question.
I, I will, I just.
I think it's important that, that I share this with the audience. And I want you, every one of you to know that I share your feelings. And I remember when I first came on county council in two thousand five, we took a tour of roads with the past county administrator, Bill Noonan. I think Robert Robinson, you were there with me, he was on council, Mr. Daniel was there. And we went out and we toured the road. And the first thing we said was that Sumter County has some terrible road. We recognized that a long time ago. But as I go through the process, I'm finding out that sometimes we need to be educated on what's going on. There were roads out there that I thought we were responsible for, and come to find out that they were state roads. But I had people constantly complaining to me about state roads. Now, I would go to the DOT there on Calhoun Street, and I'd say, hey, this problem is here, and this, sir, just had one in Sherwood Forest. I called them, the lady said, every road in Sherwood Forest is owned by DOT. I didn't know that. But I got that road put on the list for them to do it. So, we need to understand that we have different roads in the county. We have DOT roads, we have county roads, and then we have private roads. Now, we only required to deal with county roads. We are not required to maintain and update private roads. And we are not required to maintain and update DOT roads. So, you need to know the difference, which one is DOT roads, which one is county roads, and which one is private roads. The next thing you need to understand is, how does penny sales tax work? And I've heard a lot of people say, we're not gonna support it, we're not gonna support it. And, you know, I'm gonna say this. If we don't, something's gonna lose. If you don't support the penny tax, continuation of penny tax, all of Sumter is going to lose. Because we anticipate to get over eighty million dollars. Now, we gonna put money in roads. And that's the progress that we're talking about right now. But we don't wanna lose the other things we gotta do for this county. When we vote, remember now, rural people are not the only ones that vote for this penny tax. The people who live in Sumter County vote for that penny tax. I mean, the city of Sumter vote for that penny tax. They don't have the road issue that we have, the magnitude of the road. So they have other projects that they wanna do. And that money have to be shared. Because if we don't get them on board, then by now, we're not gonna have a penny tax. So you need to understand that we understand, I understand the situation. I have roads in District Seven that I represent that need to be paid. I've been working for years. We need to understand what we do with that road user fee. Because sometimes someone mention, where's that road user fee gone? I wanna get about a million dollars, get that money. And by the time we start repairing those roads, that million dollars is gone. So, please, get an understanding. And I want to just stress to the county administrator, maybe we need to start putting notices or advertisements or whatever articles in the paper to explain roads, explain the penny tax, so that you will have a better understanding. But let me say this again. I hear your feelings, I support you one hundred percent. But please, please, remember, it's for everyone. And everyone wants their share of pie. And we just can't put all the pie in one area. Just remember that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, but I just have to respond on behalf of my constituents. If you would allow me thirty seconds. I want to be very clear to this council, that my residents, my citizens, my voters understand the difference between a state road and a county road. We meet and we talk about it. They understand the difference. They also understand math. And what they understand about math is that in the first penny tax, roads got zero. They understand that, zero. The second penny tax, they got, what I quoted earlier, combined, that's a hundred and fifty-four million dollars. And they were on, and they are on the short end of that stick. So they don't have any misunderstanding. My constituents are very bright. So they not being shortchanged, they understand what's going on, I assure you. And they talk to me regularly. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.